Item A, Consider Approval. Resolution 2018 dash forty-five through fifty-four. Staff want to do a report, or you just want questions?
If I can do a short report, I'd appreciate it. Honorable Mayor and Council members, you have before you the resolutions that will put forth adopting pay schedules and the master pay schedule for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. As part of CalPERS requirements in terms of how pay schedules are posted for public information, they do require that we adopt a master pay schedule, even though that we have these agreements in place that already approves the upcoming pay increases that'll be effective as of July. I just want to highlight some of the key things that are coming out of the upcoming pay schedules that have been approved through negotiations. The city manager's position will receive a three percent pay increase effective with the first full payroll period in November. The new pay rate for him will be one fifteen ninety-one. The police chief will also receive a three percent pay increase effective with the first full pay period in July. That new pay rate will be a hundred and two and thirty-six cents per hour. Executive management, there's a few. That group will also receive a three percent pay increase. Current filled positions in that group and their respective top step pay rates include a city clerk at fifty-five and ninety-seven cents per hour, community development director at ninety dollars and thirty-six cents per hour, public works director, city engineer at a hundred and five and seventy-eight cents per hour. The confidential management employees group will also receive a three percent pay increases effective in July. The current filled position in that group includes the administrative services director at ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents per hour. All the other bargaining groups that will receive a three percent pay increase effective in July include, excuse me, the confidential employees, International Association of Firefighters, Local Two Thousand Four Hundred, General Employees Association, mid-management, professional employees, and Police Officers Association. Historically, the city council has also approved pay increases for the hourly unrepresented employees that mirror the pay increases of these represented bargaining groups. In order to continue that practice, staff is asking council to approve a similar three percent increase of the pay scale for hourly employees in July to ensure that hourly employees are compensated appropriately. At this time, staff is also recommending the hourly pay schedule that are currently below the scheduled January 2019 minimum wage increase, have their starting step grade A be set at twelve dollars per hour, and the additional steps adjusted appropriately in five percent increments so that the minimum wage requirement will be met. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions?
Council questions?
No.
Nobody has anything?
No.
Make a motion to approve resolutions twenty eighteen dash forty-five through fifty-four.
Second up.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Maria, you got off light. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Okay. Good. That brings us to what we're continuing, the public hearing for Brisbane Baylands' general plan amendment, and that will be continued until July twelfth, 2018. Right now, we have a public hearing in regards to consider adoption of resolutions to approve the budget for fiscal years 2018-19, 2019-20. And number one is adopt resolution number 2018 dash forty-two, adopting annual budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal year 2019-20, and making appropriations for the amounts budgeted. And Stuart, I guess you just want to take council questions?
That would be best. You spent five or five and a half hours on Saturday, June ninth, reviewing the budget. You asked us to include a few items to the budget, which was the historical committee's fifty thousand dollars, the request from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and capital projects for the drain line at the fishing pier, as well as developing plans for the Alvarado de San Benito and Sierra Point Humboldt Road. All those things are included. I've updated the numbers as per the staff report. I have provided the charts that Councilmember O'Connell asked you, asked about back on Monday evening. And then there's just a couple of items that the Councilmember Cunningham wanted to be included in the staff report that, if you would like to discuss, which is the idea of putting electronic signboards at Mission Blue and in the park, and then also reducing the number of agenda packets that we produce from nine to two. I think both of those are, you know, really focusing on the ecological sustainability result that the city council has said in the past that they're interested in. So I'm open to any questions.
All right. Council questions? Who wants to go first? Clifford, you look like you're ready to join.
You know, I'm good with all the items that, you know, we talked about during our budget hearing process, except for one. And it doesn't mean that I'm not in favor of funding it, but it came to us, you know, kind of last minute. I didn't know anything about the, you know, the request from the historical committee to move forward with, you know, archiving the Brisbane Bee and the Earl Video History Project and having additional staff. And so, you know, I'd like, I know you gave a great presentation, Madison, about why you did it, but I'd like to know more details about it, because it seemed open-ended to me, and that, you know, potentially, we could be looking at a lot more than fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, are there other ways to, you know, preserve, you know, the Brisbane Bee, you know, so that people would use it? But, I don't know. I mean, I'd just like to get more information. And so, at this time, I would request that we take it out of this year's budget, and then have the historical committee come back and give us that information. And if council agrees, then make an appropriation to add it back in.
So maybe Stuart can, like, I think it'd be helpful to see maybe the list of people that we've, like, discussed interviewing, and maybe why, what archiving, what the process, like, proper archiving really looks like, what that process is about, and most of the money really is for the staff time needed, so maybe staff can talk about how many hours they think that something like that might take, if that, do you feel like that would be helpful?
It would be very helpful. And, you know, kind of like what the window is for, you know, having the staff person. I mean, you could imagine that just being a yearly thing, you know, potentially. And I don't know. I don't, I really don't know.
Clifford, let me ask, would you feel comfortable with leaving it in the budget and getting that information?
Um...
That way you don't have to go back and...
You mean, leaving it as a spending, as a spending, what is it? One's an appropriation and one is a...
Well, I mean, what we could do is we could leave it in as an appropriation, and then we can, then historical committee can make a presentation of the city council before we spend any of the money. So that way, if the city council wants to make a change at that time, they could.
Okay. Is that, yeah, that works.
Wants to come back on the July nineteenth meeting?
Oh, man.
I'm kidding.
I'm going to be here till two o'clock in the morning.
Might be kind of loaded. I know, just so I can say, though, that I know that one of the things that they were looking at, though, was getting, getting the equipment, and some of the people that are on the interview list, they really want to get them interviewed, you know.
There's a timeline on that, kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I've seen Dolores's post on Facebook, and I'm loving it, you know. I've seen these old photos, and, you know, she's got this amazing knowledge of the history of our town, and...
Dolores isn't our oldest person that we're trying to capture history for.
So what is...
I'm not saying that she is. I'm just, I'm just making a comment.
Right.
But that's what the, that's why there's some element of urgency, is because we want to, we want to get started as early as possible so that we can make sure that some of those people that are really getting up there at age, we don't lose that, we don't lose that history. But I think, I think it would definitely be helpful to just get you guys some more information, and keep in mind, you know, I, I think we should come up with a plan to liquidate the equipment right after the project is done, because that's a big expense, and I would love to see us get some money back for that. And, you know, I would anticipate that, that thirty thousand, it would probably be the highest, the first year or two would probably be at that budget, because there would be so much work. But I think after that, it might trickle down, because a lot of the archives might already be digitized, so it'd probably only be incorporating the new, the new things that come in. Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know exactly what that might look like. But I would anticipate that this wouldn't necessarily be a fifty thousand dollars every single year, but it would probably go down, because most of this is geared towards a project, which obviously is going to get completed at some point.
I mean, we can bring it back in September.
September sixth, yeah. This is our first meeting.
You know, owning a production company for many years, those numbers kind of made me pause, and thinking we needed to buy equipment to do this job, and I'm not sure we need to do that at all.
We might be able to rent.
Maybe not even. I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of very talented people in Brisbane who may want to volunteer some of their time for historical projects, so part of the conversation could be, could be that, too. I mean, we're talking, you know, some of the people in town who may want to volunteer.
Right. And Keith Moreau is volunteering his time to do the videoing. What he isn't able to do is volunteer his equipment, because he would like, his understanding of what we would like and the number of people we would like means that the equipment needs to be set up in a particular place...
Right.
...all the time. And that's why, as opposed to having to take it down and reset it up every single time, he thinks it'd just be best for us.
I think there might be another option there.
Another approach, yeah. Yeah. It would be, it'd be great to, you know, to get that feedback, you know, why you guys, you know.
What would be...
If you have somebody in mind, it would be good to...
Just got a thought process.
Huh?
I've just got a couple of thought processes that, that might be possible.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Because we asked the committee that, that very question, and that was, you know, the idea that it would be set up already because we have somebody who would volunteer to come in and do it.
And do it, yeah.
And his feedback was, is that because of the time that it takes to set it up...
Yeah. No, I, I know. You know, I worked in that industry for many years.
So I'm curious what, what the other idea is.
Um, well, there are some people in town who have in-home studios that are always set up, and haven't talked to them, because I wasn't part of this conversation, but I think it's a lot of money that we're thinking of buying equipment that I don't really think we need to buy.
Well, if we can avoid that, I'm all for it. So if you can come up with a better solution, that would be fantastic.
And this might be something for the committee to think about. About six years ago, I was interviewed by the librarian, and there was some kind of grant that was, it might have been through the state of California, or a project through the state of California, it might even have been a federal thing. And so what she did was, she was interviewing various members in the community. And then, and then I got this little video of the interview, which I thought was really cool, and it didn't, you know, of course, it didn't cost me anything. It was just something that she was doing. I want to say it was Miriam that had done the interview, and she's still a librarian in town.
What's her name?
Miriam.
Don't know.
Well, anyways, I mean, that, that, you know, there might be other options out there to partner.
Sure.
Thinking, keep those costs down.
I'd like to think about that a little bit.
Okay.
All right.
Everything else, though, I'm good with, and if no one, no one else has any other questions.
Okay, so it looks like September sixth.
September sixth.
Okay. All righty, so...
I'll strike a public hearing.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have opinions.
Hmm?
I don't have any questions. I only have opinions.
Okay.
I don't know. I could leave if anyone else has questions.
Want to give your opinion?
Are we, are we, you want to move into that right now?
Yeah, if you want, I mean, if you, you know, something to talk about with the budget.
Okay. I'm pretty much good with everything. I think in the grand scheme of things, like, a lot of these park and rec asks are small, and I think a lot of them are mostly just keeping up with the times and needing to replace things that are getting old. I know that the, the PA system for, I think, is that the portable sound system replacement? Okay. That one's going to be really essential for day in the park, so that we can announce, you know, things like the dog costume contest, pie eating contests, family events. When, when certain things are happening, it's going to be really important for us to have that type of system for day in the park. I'd really love to see the council make that one a priority. I, I recognize the, you know, the wastefulness of having a signboard, but I also kind of don't like the aesthetics of an electronic one either. And I, I know that there are probably many people that can see that signboard from their house, and that will be going on all hours of the day, and maybe into the night as well. And so, but I think there might be some sort of compromise that we can come up with. Granted, you can't put necessarily multiple messages programmed in there at once that you just upload from a computer, but I, I would think that a good compromise between the two might be to get a signboard similar to what BES has, where you can put in just like letters to form words, and have a panel that you can lock, so that nobody can come in at night and, like, change all the letters around. But I think that that could, is still, is sort of the vibe of Brisbane in that home, that small-town, you know, rustic feel, but then is not wasteful, because you just have to invest in the letters once, and then change them according to what the message is. So I'd be interested in that alternative, because I think that still could save a lot of resources.
All right. Hold on a second with that one, Madison. Are you suggesting that you change that over, or for them to study that?
Maybe to study. I mean, Karen brought up wanting an electronic signboard.
Well, hang, hang a second. When you, when you think electronic, we kind of think of the, the billboards on the freeway. That's not what I'm thinking about. There's some very modern electronic signboards that are not in your face, because I know what you're talking about, and they're super ugly, and I wouldn't go for that. But there are things that actually look like they're on antique paper, they're very subdued, and they're solar. There's a lot of new stuff.
I would love to see, like, I can only draw from what I, of what I've seen. Like, there's one at El Camino High School, I think, that's got, like, right. So that's, that's the only experience I'm drawing from, so I'd really be, I'd be interested in entertaining that idea, idea if I had some more concepts and some things to work with. And then the other thing, for me personally, I, I cannot read as thoroughly on my computer, and I really value just being able to write notes. So for me, I'd, I'd like to maintain being able to have a hard copy of agendas, at least for myself, along with the rest of the materials. So those are my only comments about the proposed changes.
So you want to add some stuff in there, into the budget, from the recreation?
Yeah, I'd like to see the recreation items get approved, and I'd love to see some of the, what Karen has in mind in terms of electronic signboard, or maybe even to investigate what, like, the traditional signboard that I was talking about, like, how much does that cost, and is that feasible?
I think that would require some, some kind of study.
Right. So we can try and come back on September sixth with that as well, so I could, budget part two.
Yeah, that's not really a...
Three.
I think a budgetary issue right at the moment, right? Because that might require some community feedback, because you might get a lot of flashback, you know, with people saying, "Well, why in the heck did you go to that?" You know? And it's like, nobody asked me, you know, so...
Well, I mean, I, I brought it up. It's, and I know it's been floating around for a long time. I mean, we're spending ten thousand dollars per year in paper for that, these signboards that is not recyclable, plus the ink, plus the staff time. It's about thirteen thousand dollars a year, and we're, you know, billing ourselves that as the most environmental city, and this is not very environmental. And as for the paper that's on everybody's desk, I will continue to push staff and the city council and the planning commission and everybody else to reduce their paper waste and their ink waste. And as much as you like to make your notes, I think we all need to be, you know, thinking forward to the fact that this is not an environmentally good thing for us to be doing, whether you like it or not. So, you know, city council's going to do what they want to do, but I'm going to continue to push it forever on this one, that we need to reduce our paper waste. And whether you like it or you don't, I'm going to continue to tell you, I want you to stop using paper.
Thanks for the feedback.
Got it.
All right. Well...
I'm not going to stop on that one.
I think it's still really smart to get the community's input, because I feel like people, I think Clark's right. I think that people would feel strongly, maybe one way or the other, and I think it's good to give them the opportunity, because I think people, like, that's one thing I think people are kind of attached to. I would think we would be surprised to find how many people are, like, very invested in our signboard, so I think it might be good for us to just kind of get that feedback.
But we've got a gold standard with our environmentalism, so...
Yeah, no, I, I'm in favor of doing that study, and, and looking at the, the long-term savings and ecological benefits.
Right. We're not going to solve that tonight.
No, no, we're not.
That's not really on the agenda, so we're doing the budget, so on that...
It was on there.
So...
Well, I brought it up.
Yeah. Madison had made some suggestions about adding some items to the budget with the sound system.
No, I think they're in the budget.
They're in there.
They're in the budget.
They're in it?
Yeah, those are, the items that you talked about on June ninth, which are the historical committee, the recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission's requests, and then the capital projects I have included in the budget.
Okay. All right.
It was just that Councilmember Cunningham wanted to have the discussion about the signboard, as well as the paper waste.
Okay.
She was, you know, brought up under the idea of ecological sustainability.
Sure. No, it's a good thing, you know, Karen, but then that one probably needs to be studied, so, and I think that that...
Sure.
That's appropriate, so... Madison, anything else? Karen, or, sorry.
Terry.
That's five letters, right?
It's okay.
That was quick.
Um, so I want to admit that I'm a luddite, and as much as I appreciate the thought about paper waste, I think there's way bigger things in our budget to fry than, than paper copies for council members. And so I wouldn't be for putting, removing three thousand dollars from the council's budget for paper savings at this point. It's a topic we may want to readdress, but I personally can't work on my laptop where I normally read my agendas, so we won't go into details, but, you know, it's, it's not something I can do. I need, I need paper at this point, and I apologize for that. I always worry when we're going into reserves to make a balanced budget, and I wish we weren't. I wish we could find a way to live within our means, our immediate means, but I understand where we're coming with, up with some of the numbers for our capital projects and for putting money into reserves, so it's sort of like we're not spending it. We're putting it aside for future, for future uses and rainy day funds. So, and, and like Madison, I do want to say that I'm one of those peoples that's pretty vested in the signboard, and would certainly want that to be studied before I approved any money to replace it at this point, even though it may be a wash. And I would love to see something that's more attractive than the electronic signboards that I've seen, because just the one announcing the farmer's market annoys the crap out of me. I think they're ugly and distracting, the flashing signs that I see on the...
No, they're horrible.
That I see on the stop signs, all those things just really, really bother me. But other than that, I think we sort of beat the budget when we had our Saturday meeting, so I'm happy with the numbers that are put forward now.
Okay. So I've heard from everybody. Karen, you have anything else?
Didn't you hear enough from me already?
Uh, no.
Yeah, no, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Entertain a motion for resolution 2018 dash forty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, to the attorney. That's, that's why we got your hair, so... So this is a public hearing, so anybody wish to speak on this matter? How about the volleyball?
The budget.
You got to be the volleyball guy, because you're the only ones that's here, and this is on the agenda next. Okay. Not seeing any takers? Motion to close the...
Second.
Well, who...
I'll make the motion to...
Second.
Sorry. I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now entertain a motion to adopt resolution...
So moved.
Second.
This is for resolution 2018 dash forty-two, adopting annual budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal year 2019-20 to your budget. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? All right, very good. That brings us to...
You also need, oh, sorry. You also need to do GVMID 2018 dash oh-one for GVMID at the same time.
Oh, yeah, we're going to do that next.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Item two.
Yes. I knew you were going to get to it, and I spoke too soon.
Yeah, that's okay. I know you get excited with stuff like that.
I do. It's budget. One time of the year.
Okay.
So do we have to open the public hearing on that also?
It, it is a public hearing, still. So, item two, which is adopt budget for Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District, resolution number GVMID 2018 dash oh-one, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal year 2019-20. Do you want to do a presentation, or you want to...
No.
Okay, great.
Any questions?
Okay. Any council questions on GVMID budget?
No question.
Make a motion to adopt.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on this matter for GVMID 2018 dash oh-one, now is your time. Not seeing any takers?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Entertain a motion for GVMID 2018 dash oh-one, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
So moved.
Fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have operating budget for the next couple of years. Woo-hoo! All right. Item B, which is consider adoption of resolution number 2018 dash forty-four, adopting a master fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
This is a public hearing also.
Oh, is it?
Any members of the public wish to speak on this matter?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And motion is second to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Entertain a motion for resolution number...
So moved.
Second.
Eighteen dash forty-four, adopting a master fee schedule. Terry made a motion. Karen seconded it. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay. Now, very good. Now, we have, Stuart, good job.
Thanks.
Staff. Appreciate all the hard work that you put towards putting this new budget together, so I know that was a lot of work. As Ray Miller always says, it's a shame that more people don't show up about the most important thing of, of the city is its operating finances.
It's called bike shedding.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to new business, which is consider adoption of resolution number 2018 dash forty-three, establishing the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2019 and 2000, 2018-19 and fiscal year 2019-2020.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2018 dash forty-three.
Second.
Have a motion second. Have motion to second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. And Stewart, just so, um, you know, the members of the public, when we establish an appropriation limit, can you give a little how, how we come up with that limit?
Sure. So what we do is, we take last year's limit and we multiply it by the change in the consumer price CPI, um, which was three point six seven percent last year. And then we also multiply it by the change in either the county or the city population. Last year, the city population increased by point seven seven percent. When you multiply those two together, you get an increase of one, of four point four seven percent. Last year's appropriation was twenty million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, this year, so therefore we add nine hundred and eight thousand, so we have an appropriation, or we have a limit of taxes received at twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand. The budget anticipates taxes of fourteen point nine, or close to fifteen million. So we have about a six point two million dollar difference between the appropriation limit that we're allowed with taxes received and the amount of taxes we plan to collect. If for some strange reason, we get six million dollars more in taxes than we had anticipated, we would need to come back to the city council and figure out a way to give some of that money back to taxpayers. And that has happened, that has happened once in the history of Brisbane, where we receive more taxes than allowed by the limit.
That's when we annexed Crocker Park, right?
I think so. And what happened was you did, you, you came up with some method for providing money back to residents.
I think Colma has that issue every year, don't they?
You could only be so lucky.
Okay. That brings us to item B, which is consider entering into an agreement with SF Elite Volleyball Club proposal to install sand volleyball courts in Brisbane. And this, the council will consider a proposal to install sand volleyball courts in a vacant lot behind a Mission Blue ball field at the corner of Mission Blue Drive and Monarch Drive. All initial expenses related to construction would be covered by SF Elite Volleyball Club. Ongoing maintenance costs for the facility and use of water for court maintenance are to be determined, but is expected to be nominal. So staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Um, you have before you the proposal from San Francisco Elite Volleyball Club to install vol, uh, sand volleyball courts at the corner of Mission Blue Drive and Monarch. The intent would be to have sand volleyball court access for residents and, um, increase recreational opportunities within the city of Brisbane. Currently, there's only two sand volleyball courts in the area that are publicly accessible. That's in Mission Bay in San Francisco as well as Foster City. SF Elite Volleyball Club has offered to pay for the full cost of construction in exchange for priority use equivalent to approximately eight hours per week during the peak summer months of their tournament season. This means that the courts would be available to the community for use the remainder of the year. There's also potential to impose a court rental fee if that was the desire of the council to also generate some additional revenue. It could be rented on a per hour basis. On May fifteenth, the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the proposal and voted unanimously to make a recommendation to city council to review their proposal and move forward. And the initial suggestion from the volleyball club was to enter into a three-year contract with the city, which would transition to an annual agreement for each subsequent year beyond that. Attachment A is their formal proposal for year review. And, um, the co-owners are here this evening, and I'm sure if, if it's okay with the council, they would welcome the opportunity to introduce themselves. And, um, both they and myself would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so before we let the gentleman come up, do you have any questions for staff? Anybody?
I do.
I do.
Okay.
You can go first.
Go ahead.
So, um, on this, the fiscal an, um, analysis is that the cost would be nominal. Nominal's not a number.
So we, just in talking with SF Elite about what would be required in terms of maintaining the courts, it's really just raking it periodically. The construction process would include some fencing around the perimeter of the volleyball courts that would assist with keeping wildlife out and kind of managing the ongoing maintenance that would be needed. As far as I'm, I've been informed, um, replacement of the sand is not something that happens, needs to happen on a regular basis. It would be, you know, every so many years that it may need to be replenished, but for the most part, maintenance really just looks like raking. Um, and the water use would just be for, um, hosing down the courts as needed prior to tournaments or what have you. Not tournaments, excuse me, practice.
Okay, um, so we're not saying no cost?
Correct.
But we don't have a dollar amount for cost?
Not at this time. No, but we could come back to the council and let you know once we, we've worked with SF Elite what that would really look like.
Okay, and perhaps I see that on this you list that, um, the gentlemen here are owners of SF Elite. I'm assuming that they're a for-profit organization?
That's correct.
And so, um, the, the children or the, the, and it, it looks like it's mostly children that you deal with?
Yes.
In this program? And the children, so they pay a fee to, um, be part of this organization?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, the weather there, is that conducive to volleyball?
Very windy. Yeah, we talked with them about that, and, uh, they're residents and former residents, and they're aware of the wind that we experience in town and especially on the ridge. But primarily, they'd be using the courts in the earlier part of the summer days, and so, um, they feel that they could contend with the weather to the point where it would still be beneficial for them.
Okay, and so then, in the fiscal impact, sorry to jump back around, they're talking about additional facility amenities. How many people would, you know, for the seating, that would be borne by the city if needed? And then also, what about the parking and what about the, um, the anticipated use or possible uses the city might? Because I know we've discussed a couple of things in that area before. I mean, some of it is as mundane as overflow parking for Mission Blue, but what would the attendance be and what would the, be, the impacts on parking in that area?
Sure, so, um, we don't anticipate that there would be a significant conflict for parking with regards to the use of the volleyball courts and use of Mission Blue. Peak use of Mission Blue is really on the, in the evenings and on the weekends, and they wouldn't be using it during those times, so we don't feel that the impact to parking would be very substantial, if at all. So.
How many people do they expect to be attending these events?
Um, I think at any given time, they estimated around twenty, twenty to thirty at the most.
And do these people arrive by car, or do they, are they brought from, from their club?
I believe most of them would arrive by car, but, um, there could be some carpooling as well, since they're youth.
Okay, and, um, wouldn't that have conflicts with the times that the baseball field is being used in the parking there?
Not during summer, no.
Our baseball field doesn't get used in the summer?
Um, well, our baseball season just ended. Our youth baseball season just ended. And the Academy of Art and adult softball, most of their practices take place in the evenings.
Okay. That's questions I have right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, um, is there going to be a plan for like some sort of cover? So that people like, if we wanted to rent it out, they couldn't just jump in there with their own ball? Or if it's windy later in the evenings, um, that the sand can escape? Or I know that there's, you have discussions about fencing. I also get concerned about that becoming a litter box. So I think maybe some type of like cover in place might be helpful. It's up in discuss?
Um, it's definitely something that we could explore. The fencing would close off the courts so that animals couldn't really access it very easily. But we would still want to leave it, um, accessible to humans so that they could utilize the courts when they're not being used by SF Elite.
I would just think it would probably reduce the amount of raking you'd have to do too, if you could keep the sand pretty controlled. I bet you, you know, if you just ask Foster City, like, what maintenance they're doing since they have a court, I'm sure they'd be able to tell you exactly like how much it costs in staff time and resources and things like that. And also how much that's offset by what they charge and how, what's the interest in the community? They have a lot of people who rent it, and, you know, I think you could probably just ask them. They give all you the, all, all that information to you really easily. Other than that, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in considering the idea, and I think it's great how, if we can get as many different, unique, um, recreational activities in Brisbane. And that's something that I think we're all about. And I'd love to be, I'd love to be, um, a place where we have something that's not really found anywhere near us. That's why, you know, we have such a nice softball field, and it gets used so often, and I'm really proud about that, so.
Karen, you have any comments?
I, I think, I think it's a great idea. My, my only concern is the litter box idea. You have so many critters up there, cats, dogs, coyotes, raccoons, et cetera. And I think the most expensive part of doing this would probably be fencing around it to protect it. So we might need to talk about maintenance, including janitorial services to be provided by Brisbane, including fencing. So I think fencing might be one of the most important parts around it, just for that reason.
And just to clarify, the club has offered to provide fencing as part of the construction of the courts.
Okay, that's not what it says here, but that's.
And, and where would the restroom facilities be located?
They would utilize the Mission Blue existing field restrooms. We, we're not proposing to put in additional restrooms.
And would there be access from the Mission Blue field, or would they have to go all the way around?
Yes, so the location of the courts would be in the outfield, beyond the fence of the ball field, so they could just walk around, um, the third baseline, third baseline to access the restrooms.
But would they have of access through the fence onto the field?
Not unless they went through the dugout. It's closed off in the outfield.
Okay, so they have to go most of the way around and then over.
Cliff, you have any questions for staff?
Yes, brief, um, yeah, hi, Henry.
Hi.
So, um, do we charge, uh, citizens to use the tennis courts?
We do not.
Or any of the, well, I know that we charge, uh, the, the college to use the ball field.
Yes.
But for our citizens, if they want, just want to go out and play baseball or play soccer, we don't charge anything for those.
Right, it's first come, first served.
First come, first served.
But if, if a group wanted to reserve the field, then we do have rates for that.
And then, so with the ball field, um, how do we let citizens know that, um, the School for the Arts is going to come to the ball field and practice or play a game? And that they have to leave, or, you know, I mean, how's that communicated?
We, we don't publish that schedule currently.
All right, so, um, but it doesn't sound like there's been any conflicts with citizens saying, hey, we were here first, and we're not going to give up the field.
Not that I've been aware of.
Okay, so then, um, if there were people who were playing volleyball, and the, the, um, SF Elite had it reserved, then they would come and they would have priority over the, you know, for, for that site?
Yeah, and there might be an opportunity to post on the fencing, uh, notification of when the court will be in use by SF Elite, just so that anybody from the public coming to use the court on a day-to-day basis would have the information there and could see that it was being used during designated times.
Okay, and then, uh, Noreen, um, you know, I've, I've seen a lot of, you know, sand volleyball courts with no fencing in some very rural, woodsy areas with lots of critters. And, you know, I mean, it doesn't really seem to be a problem. Do you know of any sand volleyball courts that, that where critters, you know, make a nuisance?
You know, I've, I've talked to Foster City, and, um, they mostly contend with geese there. But aside from that, um, it, it's not been a significant issue for them, and their, their, um, maintenance crews just rake.
That's right, and, and do they have fencing around it?
They do not.
No, just leave it open?
Correct.
Yeah.
We have, we have that issue in the park. I mean, not, not issue, but we have sand in the park, and we don't fence it off there. And is there issues there?
There is an issue at Silver Spot, big time. And that's not a fence, because we used to have to, used to work at Silver Spot, and every day we'd have to go out there and be on poo duty. So I know that that, that's definitely an issue there, and there is a fence. So they're able to scale that fence.
Yeah.
Um, so you gotta come up, but they could come from the mountain, but there's still a fence, there's still a fence, there's fence all the way around. So a fence might not just, it might not do it. You might need some type of cover.
And, and what would they expect as far as maintenance from us? Is how much time, I mean, raking the Silver Spot or the sandbox at our parks is, you know, a very small area. I'm assuming these courts are pretty darn large to go on poo duty.
What the club has expressed to us is that they're willing to kind of, um, take on the maintenance and the upkeep when they're using, utilizing the courts during their peak season. So they would take care of raking it as needed. And then we, uh, Parks and Recreation staff and Public Works, if, if needed, if there was more substantial items needed, would take care of the, the rest of the year-round raking and ongoing maintenance.
And would it have nets year-round?
The fencing around the perimeter?
Nets.
Yes, yes, so that people could use it year-round.
Okay, and, but we don't know how much that, how much maintenance do they intend to do before apply? I mean, do you show up ten minutes early, an hour early to clean?
Maybe we should have them come up and.
Yeah.
Give us a little presentation.
Yeah, so is everybody finished with questions?
I am.
Okay, come on forward, gentlemen. Introduce yourselves and. Seen you around, huh?
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Councilmember. Um, so yeah, uh, please.
Why don't you give us your names, so that way we know who you are. We got, got it on the paper here, but.
My name is Robert Lowe. Uh, I was a resident previously and currently a business owner in Brisbane.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Alex Flau. I'm a, um, uh, I've lived in Brisbane for almost two decades. I'm a Kaiser surgeon, the chief of orthopedic surgery. And I played volleyball for a long time.
I'm Lawrence Chun. I'm a resident of San Francisco.
Okay.
So please feel free with any specific questions.
Nets.
So what kind of, what kind of ongoing maintenance do you expect at a facility that you do before you run a practice?
Um, so the volleyball court will be completely netted all around the entire court. So therefore, and it'll be a ten-foot netting. So therefore, it should eliminate most of.
The critters.
Critters, animals going through it. And the netting would be a little small, two-by-two nettings for, uh, at a base, similar like a baseball field or whichever. So it would be pretty difficult unless it's.
Really wants to get in there.
What size, what height netting?
Ten foot high.
Okay, that, that brings up a question about the habitat conservation area and, uh, what kind of netting we can have in that area? To staff? Fencing and netting, it would be an issue if it's that high, I believe, for butterfly habitat.
I, I don't know the answer to that, to that question.
Okay.
The butterfly habitat there?
Well, I'm pretty sure it's in the HCP area, wouldn't it be? I'm trying to look at staff. Um, wouldn't that be in the HCP area?
I mean, if I'm, I think, and I'm not the person to ask, we'll talk to John about it, but I think the entire, that area might be, and so we would check with John as to what the limitations are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that might have some effect on what we can actually do there, as far as fencing.
We might have to look at a cover.
If ten foot is too high for that reason, uh, we can definitely look.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, what it is, but it, I think it's in a, in a specific conservation area that, that has fencing issues.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm sure there are definitely those issues, but it's also in a bowl too. So, um, and we have a backstop that has got to be.
Yeah, the backstop's really high.
You know, and that's fencing, so that's allowed. So, um, but yeah, no, I'm sure we'll, we'll take a look at it. Hopefully it won't be an issue.
So should we, are we making a decision now, or are we bringing this back?
Anyone having questions?
Oh, I didn't know there were more questions.
Anybody else?
Um, I, I, I think that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have no more questions.
We did have a request this, because it is the summer month, then the summer season's starting.
Can you, can you speak into the microphone?
We did have a request, you know, if, if there could be a decision or, um, for the questions, because our summer season is, uh, is starting, and today's the first.
Sure.
First day of. But, um, yes, we appreciate your time and consideration.
How long would this take to construct?
Under two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, I, I see that you have, uh, you know, option for a third volleyball court, but that's only forty by ninety. So you should just see how things go, and then you come back to the city.
We would propose it at that time if.
Okay, and then, um, you know, I'm just kind of curious, you know, why, I mean, I know you, you, you live in Brisbane, you know, had your business here, you know, um, yeah, why, why did, why did you choose this site? this site?
I, so, original property, where I lived in was in the ridge, and so I'm very familiar with that area, and that, that vacant lot would be an excellent addition to add to the Mission Blue rec complex, you know, with the tennis court, with the baseball field, you have that batting cage, actually, there with a large container already.
High netting.
And it's, and it's an area that's not utilized, and to me, it seemed like it was a, you know, a great spot for, for a sand volleyball court, and there is a great need for, for the courts, just in the area, for example, like even USF, their women's Division One beach volleyball team, they don't even have a home court, they go to Ocean Beach and pools, sand, for practice.
Yeah, you know...
You've got a lot of critters over there.
I like the idea, you know, really, because I actually played sand volleyball years ago, and it's quite a fascinating game, you know, that it's different than regular volleyball.
Like you see out there, Clark, in your skivvies and...
Yeah. Like I said, it was a long time. But yeah, I think it's a great use.
Excuse me.
You know, it activates it, and it's not, what I would term is probably high maintenance, you know, having played on, actually, formal courts, sand courts, that they're very low maintenance, and, but I think it's a great use to, to kind of help activate it. I know at one point, we had thought about, Terry, about putting a gymnasium there, and when we had gone through the northeast ridge iterations, we looked at a gymnasium and said, well, you know, it'd be a nice, nice thing to have, but, you know, it's kind of like a swimming pool.
Money pit.
Costs you a lot of money, it's a money pit, so...
I think it's a good idea.
So I certainly would be in favor of it, and if, you know, predicated upon, you know, the staff gets back and says it's okay with the 10-foot high fencing, if not, I'm sure you can adjust it down to whatever's appropriate, so...
I just, you know, I don't know if there was any other uses that's been proposed for this land, or if, you know, it, it is basically some sort of ground lease that we'd be giving them, or is it in exchange for constructing it, that they get the use? It's just not, and if they only have a two-week construction period, I'm assuming that it's not a lot of construction to do, or what kind of permitting it would take to do. I mean, I don't know how much, you know, grading they have to do for it, or...
It's basically, we're not going underground with it, we're, it's basically going to be above ground, it's
Raised bed?
Large sandbox.
A raised bed?
Yeah, large sandbox, netting around, putting a few poles to hold the volleyball net.
Okay, and would there be any liability at all on the city's part if, if we have some sort of raised bed sand court?
It's going to be an 18-inch high, raised.
Yeah, Robert, that's a question.
Yeah, it was, sorry, it was directed to staff, because this is, you know, it doesn't have
If, if the council is interested in this proposal, I think we were thinking about coming up with an operating agreement of some kind between the city and the club, and within that context, we would, you know, require our normal type of insurance and indemnity for, you know, for when they're using the property, or when they're using the area in question, so we would have the standard types of, you know, it'd be our standard kind of, it'd be similar to a license agreement or a lease, but I would envision it more of an operating agreement than a, than a, you know, than an interest in the property itself.
So, if I may, so, these guys would build it, then that would be city property, and then we would lease it back to them for their use, is that, is that what?
Well, it would be, we wouldn't lease it to them, we would basically have an operating agreement.
Okay, operating agreement, but we would own
First priority.
We would own the volleyball court.
Correct, right, but they would, they would have certain rights to use it at certain times as, as sort of outlined
As they're constructing it, and...
Outlined in the, in the, in the report, I mean, obviously, there's some devil in the details, it would have to be worked out, but that's the general concept if the council's interested in pursuing this.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to enter into an agreement with SF Elite Volleyball Club, Volley Club, to install sand volleyball courts at the Mission Blue Field.
One more question for staff, and maybe the applicant, or the, I guess it's an applicant. Do we have any visuals on what this looks like? Is that something we need to notice, the public, about this kind of equipment going in, or proposal?
We can provide some, the volleyball club submitted some diagrams through their proposal, they're not on the attachment, they did it through a PowerPoint presentation, so they have some mockups of the space allocation that we can share with the public, if that's of interest.
Can I show you a picture?
Sure, sure, approach, happy to take a look at it.
I like it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have it on the table.
I'll call a question.
Is there a way, can, Rob, can, yeah, you see it, Madison?
Yeah, I saw it.
Just looks like a big sandbox.
It's nice.
But it's not going to be in a manicured lawn.
I know, but I want it like that.
Yeah, but once they put that there, then everybody's going to want the manicured lawn, and then they're going to want the risers, and...
Well, we could look at that in the future, I forget a lot of interest.
Cliff, well, I think yours is a good motion, I think that we should direct staff to come up back with a language and an agreement, rather than enter in, wouldn't it be better than entering into an agreement with them from a proposal standpoint, to give direction to staff to look into the issues raised in a proposed contract?
I guess it's really a question of what the timing is, because if, if the proposed construction cannot go ahead until the council considers it, we would have to bring it back on July 19th, and, you know, that would be the earliest, otherwise you're kicking over to September. My sense of it, from what I heard, was they would like to start earlier than that, but obviously, it's up to the council in terms of, of what you, if you want to see, you know, the full, you know, the full-blown agreement, and, and visuals, et cetera, before you proceed, then that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I don't think so, I made a motion, I know there's a second, so I would prefer just call the question.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, questions called, all in favor?
I
I pose.
I'm going to, I'm going to say, just because I would like to see the, the financials instead of just being nominal, that we really did have that amount, but in theory, I'm, I'm for it, but I'm going to have to say no, the way it's called.
But we could still provide those financials anyway, all right.
Yes.
So, okay, gentlemen, good luck.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for choosing Brisbane for this wonderful gift to the community, and looking forward to seeing people play up there.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, city managers report on upcoming activities.
I got nothing.
That's why we hired you.
Okay.
Okay, nothing at all, huh? Okay, all right, Mayor Council Matters, designation, voting delegate, and alternate for League of California Cities Annual Conference, and generally, this is Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, if they attend, if they don't attend, and we assign other people to do it. I do plan on attending, and Madison, I don't know if you're attending or not, but if you are, then...
The alternate mean I have to go?
Huh?
If you end up going, then do I still have to go?
You don't have to go, I think Karen's going.
Oh, well, Karen can be the alternate.
Okay, that's
Great, it's settled.
We're having discussions, so, anybody else plan on attending?
No.
I am not.
Okay, all right. That was easy, okay, so county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports?
I was at a committee.org meeting this morning, and the main item of discussion was the budget, and committee.org is doing quite well, and they are losing a couple key staff folks, so it was kind of a sad morning, but both those folks are moving on to great opportunities, and there was CCAG meeting last week. Yeah, nothing of major importance, at least, you know, dealing with Brisbane.
Okay, Karen?
Terry and I were at the Planning Issues Subcommittee meeting last night, and there was some overlap in conversation and business relative to the Economic Development Subcommittee and ours, so it seemed to be our idea that the staff come up with some different ideas, bring it back to the council or the Economic Development Committee, can you, can you make sense of that, please, Clay?
Yeah, okay.
It was, but it was in regard to cannabis business.
Yes, adding the cannabis.
That's all I would add, in that we thought there was some overlap with economic development and
It was convoluted.
I think what you asked us to do is to do an analysis on what kind of revenue opportunities might exist, and then bring that back to the council, and then you can have a discussion, and that may blend over to Economic Development Subcommittee.
Yeah, that was kind of more what was going on, so it was like, it seemed like an economic situation rather than what we were talking about, so, that was it, it was a nice meeting, thank you.
Quick, quick.
And you guys also had a Fiscal and Administrative Policy Subcommittee meeting, right?
That was Terry.
No, that was Terry and Madison and I.
Okay, Madison.
So we reviewed the personnel rules and regulations, and to my understanding, they haven't been updated in quite a long time, so they needed to, like, make some adjustments just to catch us up to what the standards are supposed to be, and we had just some minor, minor input on that. Cliff and I also obviously met with Saba before he presented here, and most of what we talked about was already discussed tonight. I did attend a Day in the Park Subcommittee meeting, we kind of discussed innovative solutions to make the event feel a little bit more connected, and try to find a happy medium between, you know, having enough space for all of the fun activities that Day in the Park offers, but also trying to, you know, make some of the community booths and the vendors feel a little bit more incorporated into the event, so the commissioners came up with some really great solutions, and it's still a work in progress, there's still a lot of kinks to be worked out, but I trust that they are going to do a great job, and Karen and I kind of followed up with an additional meeting with Stuart and Noreen, and originally, it had been proposed to maybe not have any vendors this year, but I think we, we kind of both feel that vendors really are an important part of the event, and historically, they've always been included, and so trying to find a way to, you know, maximize as much space as possible, and really have a place at the event for everybody, so I'm really, I'm really excited about what the commission is doing to look at that, and I think, I think that's all I have.
Okay, Karen, did you attend the Emergency Service Council meeting?
No.
Oh, okay, all right, Terry, you have anything?
I just have a question for the Economic Development Subcommittee, and if I can ask a question, I know you discussed the food trailer.
So the attorney, can she ask a question, is, okay, go ahead.
Okay, he was nodding, so I assume that was a yes. And I know you discussed the food trailer with them, and we never got into any specifics because it was a presentation, did they find, did you guys find that it may have economic value to the community, you know, from license fees or anything, was...
Definitely, there's going to be the space, they'd need to rent the space from us, you know, we would have like a lease for them, because that is city property, the specifics of that have not been determined, and I think that's something that will probably work out in closed session. I think mostly it was, you know, revitalizing that area, so that it's something that's got to use all year round, and also, you know, I know there's like a comment from the community about other businesses, but there, there, a lot of our food service places stop serving after lunch, oftentimes, it can be, they're not always open for dinner, or they, or on the weekends, and they don't have hours necessarily at all times when you get hungry, and so, because they also offer a different type of fare, we thought it would complement something that was lacking in terms of food options in the community, and something that the community definitely always makes comments about wanting some more variety, so we felt from, based on those things, it was worth it to come back with
Look at it.
To look at it further, do you want to fill in any of the blanks, or do you feel like you got it?
You covered all the
Okay.
Stuart, if it's hot food that's being served, they have to charge sales tax, right? And plus, business license tax, so there would be somewhat of a little, small financial benefit to the city as far as taxes, sales tax, and stuff like that, right?
Yes.
Well, my thought also would be that it might capture through traffic, rather than people who are in town, like you're just driving by, it's like, oh, look, there's something that's open, I'm a bit hungry, stop.
And we don't have anything that really does that?
No.
So that, that was also the thought, too.
I don't think I have anything to add to the other committee reports at this time.
Okay, we're at 10:04, you guys don't want to go to 10:30? Okay, brings us to city, city council meeting schedule.
Did we change anything?
We did not.
Great.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Good job, all right, so our next meeting is actually a closed session only, and that would be next Thursday on June 28th, and the meeting of July 5th, which is the day after July 4th, and the day before July 6th. That meeting's been canceled, so, we'll have a closed session on July 12th with a special meeting in the Baylands, and July 19th, we'll have a closed session at 6:30 with an 8:00 PM start of a regular meeting, and the meetings of August 2nd and 16th have been canceled.
So July 12th is for sure, not tentative?
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to written communications, and there were a few.
Clarification, what's tentative is the closed session.
Oh.
But you will have, that will be the, you already continued the public hearing tonight to July 12th.
Right.
That's happening for sure, whether we have a closed session or not is tentative.
So it's 7:30 for sure, but 6:30 perhaps?
Okay.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, so, written communications, non-Baylands correspondence, there's Anya Miller, Don Timman, Christine Okindo, and Dana Delworth, that was June 14th, 19th, 21st, and 21st, respectively, and Brisbane Baylands Project written correspondence is Dan Sorrentino, High Speed Rail Authority, and Mia Christie, and that was June 21st, June 20th, and June 11th, respectively. And with that, comes oral communications number two, and we cleared the room, so we don't have anybody who wishes to speak unless a staff member is excited about speaking in oral communications number two, but they're too smart for that, so we will adjourn.
I didn't see this.